This conference will now be recorded. Okay, I'm just gonna check. Karen Titino, she just texted me, she's going to jump on in a minute. Ike, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Jane, I see you. Anita, you're on. Bob, are you on? Bob Stokely?
I'm on.
Okay. Tina?
I'm here.
Colleen, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Mayor Aronson, you are on. Okay, we are good to go, and Karen will be jumping on momentarily, Colleen, she said to get started.
Okay. So we will get started. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshakken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Steph, if you could do roll call again?
Yeah, sorry, we'll make it official. Councilmember Titino will be joining shortly. Councilmember Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Anita?
Anita? Okay, she's there. Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Okay. Vice President Sokolowski?
Here.
President Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Aronson?
Here. Sorry, didn't realize you had me muted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public work session. At this time, please mute your audio lines. No public comment will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comment section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conshakkenpa.gov. A member of the Borough Administration will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record, and thank you in advance for your cooperation during this remote meeting. Prior to the work session, council held an executive session on legal matters. The first item on the agenda is under Presentations, is considering approving proclamation 2021-01, designating April as Pennsylvania Safe Digging Month. Steph, if you could go over that, please?
Yeah, so Safe Digging Month is an awareness initiative that's sponsored by Pennsylvania 811 for the month of April. So traditionally, outdoor projects start in the spring. Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month serves as a reminder to all excavators and homeowners to call 811 at least three business days before you dig, so that the approximate location of their underground utility lines can be identified and marked by facility owners. The call before you dig process helps to prevent injuries, property damage, and inconvenient utility outages. And we are asked, on an annual basis, to adopt a proclamation that designates April as the Safe Digging Month. So if inclined, I would need a motion to approve the proclamation designating April as Pennsylvania Safe Digging Month for Conshakken.
I'll make that motion. Ike Griffin?
I'll second it, Bob Stokely.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Traffic Initiative Update Presentation, from Brian Keveney, our traffic engineer. Mr. Keveney?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thanks, Brittany. Brittany's put up a short presentation that we've prepared with a few slides. And Brittany, if you can go to the first slide, there are three items that I'd like to just briefly update council on, primarily with respect to some of the ongoing and potential future projects on Fayette Street. The first item are the improvement of the Fayette Street crosswalks at the intersections of Fourth and Seventh Avenues. The second item is the process, or I'm sorry, the current status of the joint project between the Borough and PennDOT, which is nearing completion. And then the third item is really just an informational item for discussion and consideration at this point, which I'll explain in more detail. So the first item, as an update, this is a project that the Borough has received grant funding for, from PennDOT, and the intent is to improve the pedestrian safety at the unsignalized intersections of Fourth Avenue and Seventh Avenue. And what the project entails is the installation of overhead rapid flashing beacons that would be actuated by pedestrians wishing to cross Fayette Street at the corner. They'd be accompanied by high-visibility crosswalk markings and associated signage. So currently, we're in the process of coordinating with PennDOT regarding the approval of the permit plans for these two crosswalk enhancement installations, and we anticipate being able to put these out for bid sometime in the next four to six weeks is our best estimate at this point. So if there's any questions from council on this, I can certainly answer them now or at the end of the presentation. But this project, we just wanted to give you an update on because we are close to putting, being ready to put bids out.
Hey, Brian, just for clarification, there's no physical barriers in the road. These are overhead, correct?
That's correct. So there'll be no physical change to the roadway, other than the high-visibility crosswalks, which would be the continental ladder-style crosswalks across Fourth and Seventh. These will just be flashers. There'll be one overhead and one on the on the post on the side of the road on each approach of Fayette Street approaching the intersection. So when a pedestrian pushes the button, these flashers will activate and capture the attention of the approaching motorists, that there's a pedestrian crossing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Would we want? I'm sorry, would we want to do a campaign as well, like a cross at the crosswalk campaign for the Borough? It's something for us to think about, to promote crossing at certain areas of the road.
Tina?
Tina, I think when we put them there, it'll be in between a lot of the regular traffic lights? So they have the option of the traffic light or the crosswalk with the flashing lights?
And that was the intent, was to try and fill that gap between the currently signaled intersections.
Right.
But no, I mean, I think it's always a good idea to emphasize to any resident that, you know, crossing at an intersection, it may be a little bit of a walk, but it's certainly a much safer condition to cross at a signaled intersection or one with a flasher like.
Tina, I have spoken to the police department. A while back, we were even considering doing a little video encouraging people to cross at the actual crosswalk. So it's something I can talk to them about again.
I'm just thinking it might be an opportunity to kind of really promote safety in, you know, foot traffic along Fayette Street, that's all.
Tina, a good vehicle might be to use our Borough newsletter that goes out, magazine.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Feature it there, so everyone has it in their hand.
Yeah, and then how do we get the motorists to abide by it?
Good question.
Well, I think the answer on that is that, you know, any crosswalk, it is the motorist's responsibility to stop for a pedestrian in the crosswalk, and these flashing warning devices have been shown to be an effective reminder of that legal requirement. So while motorists, you know, may not remember that all the time, it is part of the vehicle code that pedestrians do have the right of way in a crosswalk. And, you know, that's what the intent of these flashing warning devices is, is to really, you know, emphasize that and really capture the attention of the motorist, you know, driving on Fayette Street. You're absolutely right, though, there is no, it's not, you know, it still requires some voluntary compliance on behalf of the motorist.
Yeah.
I think it also, with Tina's idea of doing a campaign on it, it also can help remind the residents that although they do have the right of way and the beacons will be there, that they actually still have to look. Most residents assume that they don't, and they can just walk out, and that's when a lot of the problems occur.
That is a valid point, and there will be signage at the flashers to remind people that they need to make sure that they look and watch for traffic and make sure the traffic stops before they cross. So it is, you're absolutely correct, that the vehicle code does have responsibility on both parties to ensure that, you know, they're paying attention to each other, for lack of a better explanation.
Right.
Very valid point.
Right. Tina, I think that should be something that we could talk about doing with the schools also. Like to teach children.
Yep. That's a good idea.
So. It's not an automatic, just walk in the street like they do in parking lots. Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay. So the second item I'd like to update everyone on is the status of the joint project between the Borough and PennDOT to improve the signal system throughout the Borough. So this project's been underway for some time, and I think we're seeing the end of it in the short term here. But to remind everyone, so this project installed three fully modernized intersections, brand-new signal mast arms with signal heads, upgraded side-street or minor approach detection for vehicles, emergency preemption equipment, new ADA push buttons and signal heads with countdown timers, and additional lighting at the intersections of Third, Sixth, and Ninth, or I'm sorry, Third, Ninth, and Eleventh. Sixth had a partial modification. In addition, all the signals are interconnected now with each other and coordinated, and the four signals closest to the bridge at Elm and Oak, Fayette and Elm, Harriet and Elm, and Fayette and First have adaptive traffic signal equipment. So that system will vary the green time based on actual traffic volume, which will ideally be, at least provide optimal condition, to the extent we can during AM and PM rush hour. That system is currently in the state of collecting traffic data in order to set the initial parameters that the system will run with. So we anticipate that system being turned on into normal operation in the next one to two weeks at this stage. Additionally, this signal system is now connected back to PennDOT's office in King and Prussia, where they can monitor the system 24/7 if needed. As part of this project, since it overlapped with the development project, and Brittany, if you can go to the next slide, the intersection of Fayette and Elm also recently was modified to provide a double left turn, which has been operating now for a number of months from northbound Fayette Street onto westbound Elm Street.
So Brian, I have a question on that.
Yeah, sure.
I know that we have the double lanes turning onto West Elm, but the double lanes turn into a single lane.
Yeah.
And that's only temporary, I think, until the rest of that.
Which, to me, I'm not understanding.
It will carry into a second lane all the way up to Oak Street. I believe some of that work rate, or that two lanes to one on West Elm is only temporary. I mean, I think that's still part of the development work that's going on there.
Okay.
So that should be, so I think once the sidewalk and curb and ADA work done, associated with the the development on that corner is resolved, that the two full lanes should be there.
Right. Have the, I guess you don't know, has anybody done a study on if that is an issue right now with that turning into one lane?
If I've turned that way, it doesn't seem to be a problem.
Only because I've been sitting at that traffic light sometimes in the morning, and it's double lanes turning onto it, and then cars don't realize they're turning into one lane.
No, they don't.
So it's just a thought.
The other lane, too.
Right.
Which means they have to cut over.
Right. I feel like right now it might be a little bit of a safety issue.
Well, I mean, I'll certainly follow up on that. I've not heard, I've not heard that comment to this point. So I know when it was initially observed with PennDOT and turned on, the two lanes were able to turn into two lanes, but you're right, that the two merged down to one pretty quickly after the intersection.
Right.
And that's.
Right, right at the intersection.
Yeah, that won't be the case forever, but at the time that it was expected, I know that it was, at least it was operating at a satisfactory level. We can certainly, we can certainly take that into consideration and take a fresh look at it, certainly.
I think the two-lane turning is a great thing. I just, it concerns me now, right now, because it's turning into one lane. That's all.
Okay.
So, okay.
Can I ask a question regarding the crossings that have the handicap button on it, the talkie? Why isn't there one at Sixth? When that light was upgraded?
I think at Sixth, the upgrades were limited to just the controller assembly at that time as part of the original scope of the project. I can tell you that Sixth will be more fully upgraded by PennDOT in the next 12 to 24 months. Fayette Street is, and I think that's the reason it wasn't upgraded right now, is that there's a second phase planned.
Okay.
So the signals on Fayette Street ultimately will be part of the PennDOT ownership pilot that is still underway, where they're going to take over from the local municipality signals along some key corridors.
Okay.
Fayette Street is planned to be one of those corridors.
Okay.
Brian, does the CMAC, does that include Front Street and West Conshakken? Are they also on the program?
They are. They're on that same program. They're part of, it's not technically CMAC funding. It's PennDOT's, they call it the Green Light Go program, which is a different funding pot, but that's going to be implementing the signal modernizations at those intersections, as well as enabling PennDOT to take over the ownership and maintenance of those signals.
Is there a timeline on that?
Well, right now, they, it's been split into two phases. Phase One is occurring this year. That does not involve Fayette Street. Their Phase Two, which does involve Fayette Street, is anticipated, I think sometime in the 2022 to early 2023 timeframe.
Okay.
And again, I think that's to the best of my knowledge at this point. You know, there is some dependence upon the Department for that schedule.
All right, so the timing will be resolved on our side of the bridge, but we'll still have the issues on the West Conshakken side until that's done?
Yeah, yes, and the West Conshakken corridor on Front Street is part of PennDOT's Phase One, which will be implemented this year. So that, they're going to do, similar to the adaptive signals we did on our side near the bridge, they're going to be doing the same type of system on Front Street in West Conshakken Borough. And that's, my understanding is that will be implemented before the end of this year.
That's great.
With these light upgrades, are they going to be doing like a block the box on Elm and First? Or those two intersections, like they did on West Conchi?
Well, I guess if it becomes a routine problem, it's certainly something that can be considered. Right now, I don't know the plan to implement that.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, certainly something that can be monitored. Okay, Brittany, if you want to go to the next slide, I guess. The third item I wanted to discuss tonight really is informational only. I think this came out of some discussions with staff and just some ideas to take a look at Fayette Street and what, you know, may or may not be considered in the future as some additional, to provide some additional safety benefits for both vehicular traffic and pedestrians. And what we had taken a look at, given the amount of volume on Fayette Street and the spacing of the traffic signals, is that one strategy that the Borough may want to consider is the implementation of what is commonly known as a road diet. And what this effectively means is the transition of conventionally what's a four-lane roadway into a roadway that really carries traffic in one lane predominantly each direction, and then uses that excess space to provide a shared center-left-turn lane both at the intersections and in between the intersections. And what it does is it leaves some shoulder area, which benefits some of the on-street parking we have, and allows, you know, the primary benefit is that it aligns the left-turn lanes at each of the intersections, which eliminates much of the crash patterns that we see along Fayette Street. And by aligning left-turn lanes, what I mean is, as you're turning left today, you're in the innermost through lane, but if there's a car turning left on the opposite approach, it hampers your sight distance or your sight line a little bit to see the oncoming through traffic. So once we align the left-turn lanes, similar to what we have down at Elm Street in Fayette, where the left-turn lanes line up with each other, it greatly improves your sight line past left-turning traffic in the other direction. And the road diet itself simplifies the number of conflict points because it reduces through traffic really just to one lane each direction. And that has not only a benefit for the traffic turning to and from Fayette Street, but greatly improves the safety for pedestrians crossing Fayette Street. So by eliminating the fact that they have two lanes in each direction to cross, there's really just one lane of moving traffic to look at, and the additional shoulder area means effectively a shorter pedestrian crossing. So the graphic on the screen now is the existing condition of Fayette Street. Everyone's familiar. So we have two lanes in each direction, separated by a double-yellow lane, or double-yellow line. You can see how the crosswalks at Fourth and Fifth are laid out. And as I described, if cars are turning left from Fayette Street on the Fourth in both directions, they're going to be offset from one another, and the sight line from one to the other will be affected by that offset. If you can go to the next slide, Brittany?
Brian, where does this start and where does it end?
Well, we haven't defined that yet, and certainly this wouldn't be applicable towards the southern end. I think this, when we looked at the average daily traffic volumes and the intersection volumes, we think that this could be effectively implemented from maybe Third North past Eleventh. And as you know, Butler Pike to the north resembles this configuration already. So it may be a logical tie-in, really, to carry it all the way.
To North Lane.
To North Lane, absolutely. And I think the southern limit would likely be, you know, Third.
Why only to Third?
Well, we could look further south. I think as we get further down, the volume increases, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking of all the restaurants that are down there, it would make pedestrian crossing a little safer.
But it may back up traffic too much, Anita.
Yeah, that too. I'm just throwing things out.
Right.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to at least bring this up for some initial discussion, because there are certainly pros and cons. So.
Right.
You know, I mentioned some of the pros as far as the safety aspects, but the cons are that, you know, limiting through traffic to a single lane, while it brings the benefit of generally a slower traffic and less difference in traffic speeds, because as you know, with four lanes, you could get different speeds in different lanes. So you have cars passing one another, and that speed differential is what often contributes to some of the crash patterns that we see. Compressing the traffic into one lane controls that, but could lead to a little bit more congestion during peak hours at the signaled intersections. Now, our initial screening indicates that the levels of service, meaning the delay, would still be at a reasonable level, but it is something that would need to be studied further to try and set that limit. But I don't disagree. If we were to study this further, we would certainly look, you know, down and to see where the logical start would be. I think between First and Second would be as far south as we could get it.
Okay.
I think my concern would be, would be the backup of traffic is going to force drivers off onto our avenues, because we already see that now on Sixth Avenue, people cutting through Powell down to Spring Mill, down to either Hector, or to go down Hector to White Marsh or to the bridge. So I think that would be a concern of mine, wherever they could make that turn to cut down an avenue, they'll do that rather than stay on Fayette Street.
Right.
And that is a possibility, and I think that's the rea, I don't know that we would have suggested this had we not done, recently done, the modernized signal system. So the, having the upgraded signals and the actuated minor approaches, you know, meaning that we'll only turn green for the minor roads when there's traffic there, it greatly enhances the efficiency of Fayette Street's throughput. So while that may be the case, that some vehicles, you know, may divert, our experience is that, you know, the traffic, once it gets used to the new pattern, doesn't, doesn't look for a detour to that extent. But it's a valid, it's a valid point. It would be certainly any part of any further study of this option. But just to further explain, yeah, go ahead.
So I know, I've seen some of these installed. I know King of Prussia just put one in. What has the experience been when they are put in, and this happens in, you know, a reasonably busy area?
Well, I mean, the experiences has been, you know, there's a number of case studies. I think with respect to safety, you know, federal highways looked at a number of these before and after, and the crash reduction has diminished anywhere from 19 to 47% along these corridors. And as long as we can maintain a, you know, a reasonable traffic flow rate along the main street, we haven't really seen detrimental impacts with diverting traffic and so forth. But, you know, the other, the thing that we need to consider is still obviously maintaining access to all the business driveways, the access to on-street parking. You know, we certainly don't want it to have a negative impact. You know, we certainly don't want it to have a negative impact in that regard. So when we look at when we look at Fayette Street, there there may be sections where the the left turn lanes, as we show them, would have a kind of a shared left turn lane section in between blocks to allow access to those those business driveways and and restaurants and residential areas. There may be sections where if we don't have driveways, we may have the opportunity to do a concrete median. Or, you know, some some striping to keep traffic out of that center left turn, that center area. So there's a number of different you know, options for implementing this. And it could certainly just be done on certain sections as well. It just has to have some logic to it where we would, you know, take it from two lanes to one or one to two lanes.
Brian, I have another question. I'm trying to look on your diagram. The parking would remain all of the current parking would stay. So then you're calling it the median would be between the parking and the two lanes. So we would retain two lanes of parking. We would have two lanes of traffic and then a center turning lane.
That's correct.
Okay, because we certainly can't give up any parking.
I'm sorry?
We certainly can't give up any of our parking.
No, we would not. We would not foresee losing any parking at all along Fayette Street. Yeah. And and the diagram I'm showing really kind of depicts the aligned left turn lanes that I was describing. So this this left turn lane configuration where you're actually sorting the left traffic into a specific lane rather than blocking the through lane. As you well know, during, you know, peak hours, a lot of these exterior through lanes in the four lane section become a left turn lane anyway, because it only takes one or two left turning cars really to to block up the through traffic. And then you have people trying to weave over to bypass those waiting left turning cars. But by sorting that that traffic into the center left turn lane and lining it up, we're actually creating a more efficient condition for the traffic that wants to to stay on Fayette Street and go through these intersections.
Brian, one last question from me. So i- if we don't have a four lane highway cutting through Conshohocken, I I mean, is there a scenario where people just find another way to get to the highway instead of cutting through town? Maybe maybe they go to Germantown or Ridge instead of using Fayette?
Well, man, that's always a possibility. I mean, you know, I'm sure you use ways as as a lot of other folks do. So I think as you know, there could be more efficient routes given certain times of day. You know, we don't see this dramatically reducing the efficiency of Fayette Street. It may just, you know, it may slow the average speed to get from one end to the other, but it's still going to be able to carry a significant volume of traffic well within the range of the traffic that's there now. So I don't know. I don't know that you would see a huge diversion, but certainly if someone has the perception that it is going to be a, you know, a slower route, they could they could certainly take a different way around the borough. That's for sure. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's not. It's a little bit of a speculative question to to try and, you know, determine without some some clear before and after results in this area.
Does anyone else have questions for Brian?
Brian, it's Tina. I guess my first instinct it as a kind of a resident looking at this, not as a council person, is oh, my God, you're going to take it down to one lane. We're going to have traffic backed up to Chemical Road. How how does this really look from that perspective? I mean, is the idea that the one lane is not going to back all the way up because of all the things that we're doing with the new traffic signals being timed and all of all of those kinds of things?
Yeah, I mean, we we, you know, we have done some very, very preliminary modeling of this corridor, looking at the traffic numbers that we have and the and the way that the traffic signals work. You know, we can get a pretty good feel for what the the level of congestion and what the queuing is going to be at each intersection. You know, certainly that's something we'd have to study further and 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 review with PennDOT if we were to pursue this. But you know, from our initial analysis, we're really not seeing excessive queuing on on the Fayette Street approaches. As I mentioned, although there is a lot of through traffic, there's a lot of turning traffic as well. And you'd probably be surprised how often that that inside lane is really blocked by left turning traffic anyway. So effectively, even though we have four lanes out there now, you know, a lot of the times during the day, there's really only one through lane moving traffic on Fayette Street. And and as you mentioned, with the modernized signal system, we are getting some some longer green times on Fayette Street to move more traffic. So but to answer the question, you know, before this would ever become a reality, the operation at at each intersection would be modeled extensively. And we would look at what the what the conditions are in the current configuration and compare them to what the conditions would be with this new configuration and certainly ensure that, you know, any difference is something that that's manageable. I guess for lack of a better term. So that's something that would certainly come back to the to council for review and extensive discussion and and require PennDOT input as well.
Okay, yes. Brian, that was going to be my next question. We at this point, and I don't know when we would know, we don't have an approval from PennDOT for this, correct?
That's correct. No, there there is no, there's no approval. You know, we've only had very you know, preliminary discussions with them to see if this would even be a candidate location. And what they've outlined to us is that, well, it might be, but you know, we need to, we need these next steps of study if this is something that council thinks is worth, you know, further looking at. But again, this this whole discussion really just came out of what, you know, the desire to to try and improve the, you know, the safety conditions for pedestrians and and vehicles, try to eliminate some of the crash patterns that we see and try and make it yet even easier for pedestrians to cross Fayette Street. So no, there's there's definitely nothing set in stone with this at all. It's really just purely for discussion purposes at this point.
Okay, so as council moves forward and discusses it as to whether we want to look into it further, what you're saying is we have to do the next steps to so that PennDOT could review them also.
That that's correct. I think if this something if this is something that council would like to pursue, we would probably have another discussion with PennDOT and and further define the information and the the analysis that they would like to see. You know, what I've outlined on this slide is the base of basis of our initial discussion. You could certainly come back with a more specific scope of of study and analysis that they would like to see. And they may participate, they may even participate in it. They've done that in other areas.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions for Brian?
No, thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda under Land Use Matters Public Hearings and Ordinance is fifty-one Washington Street zoning hearing board application. I'm going to turn that over to Eric Johnson, our zoning officer.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Our presentation tonight is for an application that will be heard by the zoning hearing board later this month. This applicant is fifty-one Washington Street, which is the property property immediately to the west of the Fayette Street Bridge. It's currently under development as with the new residential development. The applicant is seeking variances related to signage. Specifically, they're seeking to install three building mounted signs, whereas the zoning code only would permit one building mounted sign. They're also seeking a variance for some incidental signs that would be placed on the glass of the front door to the building. The code has restrictions that does not allow advertising in incidental signs. However, they are seeking to have some advertising for the building as part of the signs. So with that, I can turn it over to Matt McHugh, representative for the applicant, to speak to the application.
Good evening. Thank you, Eric, and thank you, members of council. I am here on behalf of fifty-one Washington LCLLC, the applicant and developer of the fifty-one Washington Street project. And I also have with me here Brandon Siegel from the developer, in case there's any other questions that that may come up. The application is pretty much very straightforward. The the project is being branded as the birch at fifty-one Washington. As Eric indicated, there's proposals for some wall signs associated with that and as well as some incidental advertising material. Brittany, if you could go down to the to the fifth slide of the PDF that would show, I think that's the rendering of the the front entrance of the building. So you'll see on the top, that's one of the proposed wall signs. And then there's actually two awning signs, one which is the birch at fifty-one Washington. And the other one is fifty-one, which is actually an address sign and is not counted. And then also, Brittany, if you want to show the last slide, which is the, I would call the rear of the building, that shows the third wall sign advertising the birch fifty-one Washington. So that's the scope of the application. We think it's you know, signage that is reasonable and necessary to advertise the property, identify it to residents and their guests that are and is also consistent with the facade features of the building. So I'm happy to open up any questions that the the council may have.
How are these signs being lit?
You request. Go ahead.
The signs are lit. Yeah, they're they're LED channel letters. The the channel letters are lit through LED lighting.
So you're not using backlighting?
No, they're they're channel lit.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm assuming you're requesting three because of the location and the size of the building?
Right. So you have, you know, one is over the the awning for the entrance of the building, which is, you know, a necessity for people to identify the door. But the other two, because of the location and the building and and it's, you know, it's visibility and and size is necessary to have, you know, both the front and rear covered.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Matt?
No.
No. Okay, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for your time.
Just for for council information, this is just an informational only presentation. It is a no vote, so so everyone is aware. The next item on the agenda, which is also just for information, is a discussion on an amendment to the parking and snow route section of the borough ordinance. And Ms. Chekow will take over that.
Thank you, President Leonard. There are a few parking ordinance revisions that we are working on administratively and also working with the Parking Task Force on. So there is right now, we we need an addition of a no parking sign on West Fifth Avenue between the Police Department and the Borough Admin Lot. So there's this small area between both lots. There should be no parking because the vehicles that are parked there create a hazard. There seems to be one specific vehicle that parks there on a regular basis. So by why actually adding a no parking sign and amending the ordinance, it would be enforceable. So again, we're talking about just that small. It's about from the PD curb to the admin curb is approximately thirty-five feet. The second location is in front of Fritz Lodge. So there was a request to have a no parking sign at the entrance to their parking lot on East Eighth Avenue. The current ordinance does not have this area listed as no parking. So we need to formalize it in the ordinance and make it a no parking zone. Again, you're looking at about five feet from the western edge edge of the driveway towards Fayette. The sign would say no parking from here to corner. The last parking addition request came from Penn Therapy on Eleventh, specifically for injured patients to have a designated spot right in front of the office. So the specific location and measurement would literally be be out in front of the business. And again, it would be specific for injured patients to be able to have easy access into the therapy office. Administration is in support of those three no parking additions to the ordinance amendment. And then in addition to parking, we believe that there should be a stop sign that's added on West Elm Street at Jones Street. And again, this is for safety purposes evaluated by our Operations Department and our Police Department. And then the last revision that we're looking at in terms of ordinance is snow route revisions. Right now, our snow emergency routes do not include West First Avenue from Forest to Fayette on the west side. And they do, it does not include East First Avenue from Harriet to Fayette. And based off of an evaluation, this winter in particular with the snow, we believe that those locations should be added as snow emergency routes. So tonight, this is in front of you for discussion. If you have any initial input on the no parking signs, the stop sign, the snow emergency routes. If there are no comments or if you have any questions over the next two weeks, forward them to my attention and we'll vet them through administration. And this will be back in front of you formally for the next step in an ordinance revision at a future council meeting. So for tonight, is there any initial take on those specific items that you'd like us to discuss internally?
I don't have any concerns.
Nor I.
They seem reasonable.
I'm okay.
Okay, well, what we'll do, again, you know, we'll we'll make sure that you have you'll, this will come back in front of you. If in the meantime, if there's any additional information or any thoughts that you have, feel free to forward them to our attention and we'll vet them administratively and we'll encompass those comments in what is drafted to be back in front of you for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda under Council Business is a discussion on Conshohocken Bears' use of the borough facilities. And I am again going to take hand that over to Steph.
Okay, thank you, President Leonard. So for this evening, I just want to stress at the start of this conversation that this is for discussion only this evening. What I would like council to do is take the information that is shared this evening and digest it and think about it over the course of the next two weeks. And it will be back on your agenda for April twenty-first for formal consideration. Everyone on everyone on council is aware that over the course of 2020, the borough received numerous complaints and concerns from residents surrounding the A field and the B field pertaining to the Conshohocken Bears' organization. Historically, the Conshohocken Bears have utilized the A field and B field as their home field. While we have received some complaints in the past, it was never to the extent that it was in the 2020 season. Complaints ranged from noise complaints to fights that required a police presence. Therefore, Lauren, who is our Director of Recreation Services, and Mark, who is the President of the Bears' Organization, and myself engaged in numerous conversations over the 2020 season, and those conversations continued into 2021. But I think all three of us agree that there there needs to be a change in the relationship between the borough and the Bears. Additionally, unlike the Bears, unlike other youth groups in the borough, they they were not required to pay they, they were not required to pay for use of the facilities or fees associated with use of the facility. So again, this is, these are all conversations that we've had with the President of the Bears. They've been very positive conversations, so I'd like to thank Mark for that. But again, they're just, there needs to be a change. So, and then finally, you know, the A field, A field and the B field, to Lauren's credit, are actively being utilized by programs and organizations now to a great extent. That's very positive for the borough. And it may have worked to just reserve both of the spaces for the organization. It just doesn't, it no longer makes sense for the borough now that the Department of Recreation Services is actively programming on both fields. So with that being said, and again, after many conversations with the Bears' organization, we're recommending that you allow the Bears' organization to continue to utilize the A field and the B field for the 2021 season. But it is, we're, we are recommending use under very specific terms. So those terms include the following. Reservation, reservations will be made on a first come, first served basis. In other words, the fields will no longer be reserved indefinitely for the Bears. The Bears can submit their requested use schedule, and the Department of Recreation Services will schedule available dates and times. The Bears will pay for their cost of lawn services for the A field for game preparation. Costs will be invoiced to the Bears on a monthly basis, along with an extra portable restroom fee. Estimated costs for field preparation are around $3,900. There will be a $2,500, what I'll call an escrow, that will be deposited with the borough and will be held for the duration of the season and will be returned to the organization at the conclusion of the season if there's no damage, et cetera. There is no street parking on 13th Street, no double parking, no blocking residents' driveways, et cetera. No smoking, no drugs, no alcohol. Organizations cannot, the organization cannot post signs on borough property. The facilities cannot be used unless approved by the Director of Recreation and is on the official reservation calendar in the Recreation Department. This includes use of the snack stand on the B field and any all event, events, including fundraisers. There is no trespassing on, on private property, which includes the surrounding residents' properties. No loud, profane, or thumping music, no foul language or profanity, no fighting. A code of conduct from the parents, participant coaches, and board members will be signed and kept on file with the borough. The condition agreement, which memorializes these terms, will be signed by the Bears and on file with the borough. This document will be made public. The use of portable restroom facilities is required. Public urination is prohibited. The organization will also be responsible for the cost of an additional restroom that the borough will order and invoice to the Bears on a monthly basis. The organization will provide a list of all individuals who have access to the snack stand on the B field. All trash will be collected and disposed of in receptacles prior to leaving the field. This includes inside and outside the fields and stadiums. Adherence to all park rules. An updated health and safety plan will be submitted, including CDC recommendations and any state directives. And then there is a termination clause that will be included in this agreement. That termination clause will state that one violation of any of the conditions listed above will result in immediate termination of the use agreement with the Borough of Conshohocken. There will be no exceptions, and there will be no second chances. And termination will occur mid-season if required. So in thinking through that termination clause, if we are presented with a situation where it is a he said, she said situation between the Bears and a surrounding resident or an administrator, the resident or administrator will have to provide proof and documentation of a violation of any of the terms listed. If the proof provided illustrates a violation did in fact take place, the Bears' presidents will be notified by my office that use of borough facilities by the Bears is being terminated immediately. I think it's important to note that these terms were generated collaboratively between the borough and the Bears. Again, I'd like to thank Mark Benjamin for his efforts and his willingness to go above and beyond for his organization and the youth that participate in that organization. I think that he is aware of the fact that the issues that occurred last year cannot continue. With that being said, we've required that the Board of the Bears formally vote on those terms. I have in writing from Mark directly that the Conshohocken Bears Board met and voted to the terms which I just laid out. They also voted through the deposit and the lawn service fees. They voted and agreed to all of the conditions proposed. And they also voted and agreed to the one-strike policy, the termination clause. So all of those items were discussed, worked through. The borough has on file the vote and approval by the Bears' organization board. So with all of that being said, again, tonight is not the decision night. Tonight is the discussion night. Those are the terms laid out by which the Bears will be authorized to utilize the fields. If there are any questions at this point or concerns, I'll, I will take them in. And as we work towards finalizing an actual agreement with those terms listed, that actual agreement will be back in front of you for formal consideration at the voting meeting. Is there anything else you would like added, removed, considered as we finalize the agreement with the Bears?
Steph, I have a question. It's Tina.
Yes.
And it might be a Mike question. So in one of the terms, it, it talk, you talk about he said, she said, and proof would have to be produced and determined. Number one is, who are the determining folks? Do we have to set up some type of committee or some type of governance that would determine that? And number two, is there anything that we have to worry about related to taking video as proof?
Yes.
That would come forward?
Not if the video is video of, of the public event, no.
May, may I make a comment? I'm sorry. My name is Jim Seepar, and I'm one of the surrounding residents.
No, no, sir.
And there will be, there'll be a section for public comment at the conclusion of the meeting. So Jim, if you can just hold your comments.
I will, thank you.
Yes.
So to answer your questions, Tina, yes, you're allowed to view video for determining whether or not there's been a violation of the rules. In terms of who actually makes that determination, I think at first blush, it falls on your Director of Recreation. But Steph, Steph and I can work through who that would be. It, it should not be, at least on initial blush, it should not be Borough Council. It should be someone administratively.
Okay. Tina, to your point, we'll, we'll tie that up and have that confirmed for you in two weeks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council have any questions for Steph or Mike?
I guess for Steph, I'm like, would something like a police report be considered proof?
Yes, absolutely. I can't figure that out yet.
So it would be fact-based, it's not an opinion, that's what you're saying, it's objective, not subjective?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is, is Lauren here?
I am, can you hear me?
Lauren is on the call, yes.
Hi, Lauren. I just have a quick question. I know that Steph mentioned, and thank you so much for it, that we now have quite a few organizations that use, make use of the B field and the A field other than the Golden Bears. Do you have an idea of how many we have now?
Well, within the past three years since I've been there, I have worked with over, I would, a dozen organizations to schedule either at the B field or A field. Many are recurring. I work with many of the same organizations, year after year, requesting use of the fields for multiple days for a season.
Right.
And then we also have our own programming as well.
Right, which you've done a great, a great job on, on both ends there, Lauren. I really do appreciate it, as does the rest of council, making the use of, making the best use of our fields. But also, my second question is, have we had any other serious issues with any other organization using the fields?
I have not.
Okay. That answers my question. All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Steph. So we'll, I'll take all of that under advisement and consideration for the next two weeks.
Yes, and, and, and for anyone who's on the call with public comment, if there is public comment at the end of the agenda, we'll take that into consideration as well with what is back in front of council in two weeks. So just sit tight for a couple more minutes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is manager manners. So Stephanie, we're going to go right back to you.
Okay, the first item is the bid for the purchase of PPE coveralls through the Assistance to the Firefighters Grant. So if you'll recall, the borough was a recipient of the FEMA grant for the purchase of personal protective equipment for, for both fire companies. Of the equipment to be purchased, the amount for the protective coveralls exceeded the threshold for, for telephone bids. Therefore, we went through the process of actually preparing sealed bids, advertising and distributing. Those bids were due April 1st. They were opened virtually on April 6th. The bids were tabulated. This evening, I have a, I have a recommendation to award the bid based off of the timing of the actual grant itself. I do need a motion this evening. We received 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, approximately 14 responses to the bid document. Those bids were reviewed internally. The bids received were widely divergent in terms of costs and satisfaction of the borough's requirements for the products requested. Two bids addressed the borough's requirements for protective coveralls. The low bid was from Contract Cleaners in the amount of $17,186.40 for the provision of 2,500 protective coverall suits. Contract cleaners will comply with all stated borough requirements for the quality of the suits and order suits upon award of the bid. So therefore, it's the recommendation that Borough Council consider awarding the supply of 2,500 protective coverall suits to Contract Cleaners at the price bid plus the reasonable shipping costs. Costs will be reimbursed by the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters COVID Supplemental Grant. So if inclined, I would need that motion.
Steph, before we do a motion, can I ask a question? It's Tina.
Of course.
Sorry. That's okay. We went through the bid process, but did we do an evaluation of the product as well? Because I don't want to say yes based on price if we didn't evaluate the actual product. And this is coming from my own experience with all the products that are out there.
Yes, so, yes, we evaluated the products that they were going to provide. There were some issues with the product, Tina, specifically. There were bids that came in that were lower, that were removed from the process specifically because they couldn't meet standards that we were looking for that were included in the actual bid document that went out. We also were looking for specific product information and sizes that some companies were not able or willing to meet. So I'm saying it is the low bidder per the specifications that the borough required in its bid document.
Okay, did you, did you actually have the products in your hands where you looked at them and had someone evaluate them physically?
No, we did not.
I, I would make that recommendation that you ask for a couple samples before we... This is a, this is a safety thing, and I don't want to just do it based on specs. I want to make sure that the folks that have to wear them feel safe and, and to the best of our ability, if we can get some samples to make sure that what our evaluation is, is thorough.
So what I will do, if you are comfortable with that, is I would ask council, just because of the timeline of the grant, to make the motion to award the bid to Contract Cleaners based off of, once a sample is evaluated, if you're comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
I don't, I don't want to, I, I do not want to miss out on being able to take advantage of a grant through FEMA. If we can get a sample in tomorrow, and that throws off our entire timeline. So I agree with what you're suggesting.
Fully understood. I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, that we've explored the right options, that's all. Understood.
I'll make that motion to Tina.
I'll second, Anita.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
So just as a follow-up, I will confirm with everyone that the sample is either acceptable or not acceptable to our emergency responders.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Sorry, I'm just writing myself a note. Okay. The next item is to consider approving Seven Tower Bridge Financial Security ESCRO release in the amount of $344,925. This has been reviewed by the Borough Engineer. You have a report prepared by Karen, which approves and supports the requests for the recommendation for the release of the ESCRO. So if so inclined, I just need a motion to release the amount of $344,925.
I'll make that motion, Barton.
I'll second it.
That's Jane. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is, unfortunately, one of our founders of the Dog Park Advisory Committee, Mackenzie Bralinger, is relocating outside of the Borough of Conshohocken. So we have received her formal resignation. I believe I did ask if she, her, her boyfriend could move in with her in Conshohocken as opposed to her moving in. That didn't overwhelm my request. But we're sad to see her leave. We'd like to thank you for, thank her for her service. But I do need a formal exception of her resignation in order to formally post the vacancy on the borough website.
I'll make that motion with regret.
Yeah.
Second from Representative... So we have a motion from Jane Flanagan and a second from Tina Sakolowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is discussion on AmerisourceBergen RACP grant-related agreements. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, President Leonard. I can be relatively brief because we like to discuss the RACP program and how the program works. Last year, when the same project was awarded an $8 million grant for the AmerisourceBergen Office Building, they have also been awarded a $2 million grant for the parking garage structure. The agreements that you're actually considering, the cooperation agreement, the sub-grantee agreement, and the reimbursement agreement are actually the exact same agreement you considered the last time we went through this, updated for this project. So... So take time over the next week or so and review it. Let me know if you have any questions. But we have taken steps by drafting and preparing the reimbursement agreement to make sure that the Borough has protected itself in terms of reimbursement associated with the inspections under the agreement and also if for some reason the grantee under the agreement violates the agreement. So just to remind you, they're awarded a grant. The grant and the agreement are between them and the RDA, but because the Borough has taxing authority, the Borough has to enter into an agreement agreeing to back the funds that are used as part of the grant. And as we discussed last year, no municipality has ever needed to pay back funds, and we have taken steps to protect the Borough in the reimbursement agreement. So I'm happy to take questions now, or you can ask me questions via email. You'll be voting on this at your April 21 meeting.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Peters this evening?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is council member and Mayor Matters. Mayor Aronson?
Thank you, President Leonard. So last year, the Pennsylvania Mayor's Association had a Bells Across Pennsylvania evening where they asked all the communities across the Commonwealth to ring bells in honor of our frontline workers as we were dealing with COVID. We decided, why not continue that yearly? Why not always honor our frontline workers? So we are planning to do that again on Saturday, May 2 at 7 o'clock. We're going to ask all of our residents to ring bells. I'm going to reach out to our churches to make sure that they can ring bells. And I'm asking for council's approval so that our fire company can ring their sirens in honor of our frontline workers and also that this initiative can be advertised on Borough social media so that residents know to come out on May 2 in support of our frontline workers.
Okay. So what the mayor is asking this evening from council is a motion to approve Proclamation 2021-02 Supporting Participation in Bells Across PA. So I would need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Barton.
And a second? Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Stokely, do you have any comments for this evening?
I have nothing tonight, colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barton?
Yeah, I'd just like to put something out there to all those people that own dogs to please not only protect your dog, but the people that walk their dogs and keep them from attacking one another. It's been a real problem here of late. So please protect not only yourselves, but others. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Ms. Flanagan?
No, I have nothing tonight to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Ms. Tino?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Well, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Wake. Vice President Sokolowski?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Everyone's very quiet tonight. Okay. Chief Matt?
President Leonard, I just want all of you to know that the District Attorney's Office got some grant money specifically for human trafficking, and they started a task force. They're forming it now, and it's to investigate missing kids. In other words, we, you know, kids that run away and things, they don't get followed up on with an eye towards them being exploited or anything. So they formed a task force of detectives from the county to do this. And the District Attorney himself requested our detective, Bill Walter, to be on the task force because he's really built a reputation as a really good investigator in the county. And it's good to have a good reputation, and he's one of ours, and I wanted you all to know that.
That's, that's great.
Congratulations to him.
Yes. Yes. Thank you for representing the Borough and doing a great job.
Colleen?
Thank you, Chief Matt.
Can I just... A couple reminders.
Yes.
We have our EAC clean up this weekend. It's 10:00 a.m. at the Conshohocken BFW. I do want to run a bunch of questions today. It is rain or shine, so we will be out there no matter what. The weather looks like it's going to be okay. We do ask that while you're at the point of picking up all your materials, that you wear a mask, you have to wear a mask on the BFW site. And we look forward to our first in-person event in a while, so it should be nice to be out there again. And then I also wanted to thank Recreation Services Department for doing the bunny hop drive-through. We know how great Lauren is, and the team down there is amazing, and it was really fun to see like the kids pull up in the backseat and excited to get their goody bags and hang out with Easter Bunny. So, so thank you, Lauren, for organizing that. And then we have a suicide prevention training. It's called QPR training. It's an entry-level class for anyone to take. It's free of charge. It's going to be not this Sunday, but next Sunday at the BFW lot outside. And it's just about how to talk to people about suicide and how to offer help and where to send people for more resources.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Go ahead.
We had three weeks, so there's a lot.
Go ahead.
The other thing is, I know we're very happy. We saw Lucky Dog was closed for a little bit, but Barry did reopen, and the place looks fantastic. And that is the Captain Crunch Cheesecake, which I cannot recommend enough. So, you know, we're so thrilled to see our businesses surviving through the pandemic. And of course, having Lucky Dog reopen is a big part of our community. So that is officially it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Thank you, Lucky Dog. Anyone else from council have anything?
Carl, just a reminder that we've got the poems. The library has sponsoring the poems this month, so if we have any residents that have time to go to our various parks and read the poems.
Right. Yes, it's a nice program. So if the residents can get out, it would be great for them to see it. So, okay. So on that note, we will move on to public comment. Brittany, do we have any comments to read?
No, we did not receive any written public comments.
Okay. So then we will move on to public comment. So anyone who has public comment, if you could please, well, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone for public comment?
Can you? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Carrie McMahon. I am a Conshohocken/White Marsh resident.
Right.
I just have several questions regarding the Conshohocken Bears. If it's okay if I go through my list of questions?
Carrie, if you have a statement to make, we'll add that to public comment. If there's specific questions, it probably would be best if we discuss them one-on-one. But why don't you go through them, and then we'll determine what's the best way to tackle them?
Okay. And maybe I can try to frame as a statement as opposed to a question. But, so I know there have been undercover cops looking at the drugs. So we would like to know whether, if there are undercover cops, one, how would the residents know that? And if undercover cops actually do see something, is there anything written that they would then have to submit that to the Borough as, you know, proof or evidence that they have, you know, didn't meet part of their contract? Just want to make sure I understand whether it's pictures and/or video as far as documentation confirming that there be zero parking on East 13th on the field or along the side of the resident's home. Last year, even though that after all the incidents and they were supposed to be parking in the parking lot, parents were still, few parents were still parking alongside of the street and on the field. And so like belaboring after the practice or getting, having loud conversations. So something to consider that even loitering afterwards and having that type is, you know, it's not acceptable to the residents. There was several littering. I'm not sure if I heard anything about the littering. We were always constantly picking littering up off of our lawns. Also, you know, we're not sure what the rules are regarding allowing teens outside the Borough to use. I'm not sure what, you know, the rules and regulations are now. You know, they're outside Conshohocken. Sure what the rules are regarding that. Those and my comments and statements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, I think what would be prudent is I have your comments listed as supplements to the list that we have in terms of the terms. In terms of answering your questions, I'll have your email address, so I will follow up with you tomorrow.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. And just one, sorry, one last statement is that, you know, one resident has actually already moved because of everything that happened last year. And, you know, we're hoping that that is not the case for other residents on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Hello. My name is Jim Seepar. Can I go next?
Yes.
Wonderful. I'll try and be brief. And first of all, thank you for allowing me some time to come and comment. I'm primarily going to restrict my questions to the issue of the Bears as well. So I'm looking out my window right now, and I'm seeing a very large group of people playing volleyball on the B field. And even though it's, you know, dozens of people, no issue with parking, no one's throwing trash on my lawn, no one's fist fighting, all the issues that are in the agreement with the Bears, but are fundamentally, many of those things are prohibited by law anyway. You know, it seems strange. You'd have to ask for a separate agreement for people to agree not to do those things. But my question is twofold. Last year, there were numerous occasions where the already very large Bears crowd was joined by another team and their families with hundreds and hundreds of people and hundreds of cars on the very fairly small B field. And we had some incidents where people were trespassing. When we talked to Mark about it, who's a wonderful man, by the way, the coach, this nice guy, he just can't control these crowds. He basically excused it by saying they weren't with his team. However, they were wandering around in my neighbor's yard. And ultimately, no harm was done. It just seemed like a very strange excuse to make, if you will, to say that because they're here at my invitation, but they're not with me specifically, I'm not responsible. So I'd like that baked into any agreement, if possible. The only other thing is, two bathrooms for the volume of people, two porta-potties for the volume of people is pretty low. Last year was very normal to see like small children on the apron of the field with their parents urinating or taking care of business. I certainly wouldn't photograph that to turn that in. I'm not interested in going to prison. So what supervision are you folks going to have here to, you know, really drain in these large crowds that are being permitted to come here for these events? Thank you.
Jane, I have your address for the record.
Yes, 114 East 13th Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And anyone else for public comment? Yes.
Yes. Hello?
Hello. Go ahead.
Hello, can, okay. This is Anna DeSantis. I'm a Conshohocken resident, and I did want to say something about the Conshohocken Bears and the agreement that you all voted for them and your recreation office. I think it's really...
Ms. DeSantis, to clarify, they've not voted on an agreement. They were presented with terms. It'll be back to the line of council formally in two weeks.
I don't mean the council. I mean the Bears. They voted on it, right? To accept all the terms?
Yes.
Right, okay. Well, I just wanted to say, I think the terms are really, really strict. I think they're really strict, and I think they're setting themselves up for, I don't believe they're going to be able to honor all these terms because there, what if there are kids from different neighborhoods coming into our neighborhood and causing trouble? And then the Bears get stuck with that one strike, you're out, and they can't use the facility because of some strangers coming in and causing trouble for our community? And my second thing related to that, what if it's the opposing team's kids coming and causing this trouble and urinating on property and walking on people's lawns? Like, why should the Bears be stuck with the responsibility with controlling kids from other neighborhoods, kids from the other team? I just think it's a bit much. I think it's so strict that our Bears are going to lose their playing fields based on these really, really strict rules that you're causing here. I think there needs to be consideration on other ways of handling these problems. Maybe some community participation as far as walking around the fields and, you know, monitoring the kids and saying, "Look, guys, get off of that lawn." You know, I think there's another way of handling this. And I hope you'll reconsider those really strict terms. And that's all. The other thing I wanted to mention was those requests for those no parking signs. I think there were three different requests. And I didn't see any presentation as to the exact locations and the pinpoint, you know, where on the, like, there was no map and no presentation of it. And I just think that it would be wise to take a closer look at these parking requests, these no parking sign requests, just so that we can all feel more comfortable with the decision in accepting these requests and without considering, okay, what's the surrounding area? What is right up the street from that parking area? You know, like, I think there's a little bit more to consider than just saying, "Oh, sure, we'll give you some no parking signs." What could that hurt, right? And, hey, I would love to say something like that myself, but I just thought that before we decide on just accepting these requests, that we take a closer look at the area, kind of look like map it out, or what else can be affected by these parking, these no parking signs? So they're the only two things I wanted to talk about and say, and I really don't expect any responses. I just wanted to get my voice out there and express my opinion on those couple of things that kind of struck me tonight. Thank you for your time, and thank you for this meeting.
Ms. DeSantis, can you provide your... Ms. DeSantis, can you provide your address for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm at 200 West Elm Street, down at the Grand.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSantis. I know we have another person for public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is Cindy C. Parr, 114 East 13th Avenue. And I have one question, and this basically is directed to the Chief of Police. When we call them this year, will they actually come? Because I can tell you in prior years, they have never come. If I call White Marsh, they show up, but that field is Contra Hocken property. And the police officers have told us from Contra Hocken that that's not the Contra Hocken property. So if I call the police because there's an issue here, like blocking my driveway, profanity, someone's peeing on my lawn, are they going to show up?
Chief Metz, are you still at the meeting?
Yeah, I'm at the meeting. I'll dispute the fact that we don't show up to calls at the B field because there's plenty of documentation that we do. My suggestion to you, ma'am, is if someone is blocking your driveway, that's a White Marsh Township Police Department problem. If they're on your lawn, that's a White Marsh Township Police Department problem, and you should call them. And I'm sure they'll give you prompt response.
Well, I will tell you, last year, we called, and the police, the Contra Hocken police did not show up. So I would very much like to see that documentation, because we called more than once. Not only is it that they are blocking my driveway, but they block and park halfway out in the street right across from the entrance to my driveway, which is Contra Hocken property. So I'm telling you now, we called last year probably a half a dozen to a dozen times, and the only people who ever showed up was White Marsh.
Right. We've been on joint calls there with them, and it is documented. And the street is in White Marsh Township. The field is in Contra Hocken. If you see conduct, if you see conduct on the field that demands a police presence, you know, feel free to call us and describe what you see is going on in the field, and that's our jurisdiction.
So if the car is parked halfway on your field and halfway in the street, are you telling me that that's not your problem?
I'm telling you, the street is in White Marsh Township. We're talking about specific things here. We, you know, if you see conduct there on the B field that you think needs to be addressed by police, feel free to call, tell us, you know, tell the dispatchers where you're calling from and what you're observing, and we can go. My suggestion, if there's something going on on your property or the street, that is White Marsh Township's problem, only because it's their jurisdiction.
Chief Metz, can I interject quickly?
Sure.
We administratively, meaning Chief of Police included, met to discuss the terms that we were comfortable presenting to the Bears for their use of the field. Is that accurate?
It is.
Yes. So for the residents on the call, you are, the list that you heard includes the Chief of Police's support of those terms. So regardless of what took place in the past, we have an excellent police department. We have a Chief of Police who understands the sensitive situation with the Bears and the use of our facilities. I can tell you that our Chief of Police is an excellent Chief of Police, and he is supportive of this agreement that will be in place with the Bears moving forward. Chief, is that an accurate statement?
That I'm an excellent Chief of Police?
Wow.
Yes, it is an accurate statement.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief Metz, I think the point that you were trying to make on the calls is when it's on the White Marsh side that Contra Hocken Police don't have any jurisdiction to really do anything about that, you can't ticket, you can't do anything, it has to come from a White Marsh Police Department. Am I correct on that?
The thing, the things that the resident that was just commenting talked about, those specific things are something for her police department to address. The conduct on the field is ours, because that is ours next to the borough, and it's our responsibility.
Right. And I'm only making it, you know, saying it clear is because my whole life, I've lived in that situation on the border and in the middle of the street on my street. One side is Contra Hocken, and the other is White Marsh, and the two can't cross over. So that's just my point in it. Just trying to make it a little more clear.
And I'll further point, Mrs. Leonard, that on your street, the borough has half the street.
Correct.
We don't have half the 13th Avenue.
Right. So it's a little different up there. We only go to the end of the property.
Correct.
Right. So it's not that the Contra Hocken Police don't want to answer your call. They really can't help you with it. It has to be a White Marsh Police Officer that comes when it's in the street or your property.
Okay.
Does that make it clearer?
Nope, that doesn't answer my question, because last year, there was a fight on the field, and we called the county police, and they didn't come. So that's my point. And if a car is parked halfway on the field and halfway in the street, then there's an issue. So, you know, it's a real problem. I would invite all of you to come up here on and see what happens with the Bears. It is a disaster. They're throwing kids out of the car, stopping in the middle of the street. They're just, and they're just dropping their kids off and driving away. And, I mean, and people are driving 35 and 45 miles an hour down the road, and there's little kids running out in the street. Someone's going to get hurt, and we need help in keeping it under control.
And I think the administration so far has started the process with the agreements. And, you know, I'm sure that the White Marsh Police will be available and the Contra Hocken Police. And hopefully, things will be so different this year that it won't be the horrible issue that it was last year. So we do hear your concerns. We're well aware of them. I was up there many times last year. I did see it. So it's not like we're not. And we, you know, appreciate your comments. Thank you for giving me some time to vent. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Yes. Hi, my name is Mark Benjamin. Is it all right for me to comment?
Yes, can you put, state your address for the record?
Yes. I actually live in Eagleville. I'm the president of the Bears. I just wanted to put out there that, you know, Lauren and Stephen are great people, and I enjoy working with them to come up with their agreement. I do say that there needs to be some changes, and we're working hard as we can to make the changes. But I just wanted to tell the residents, as Jim could tell you, and Bill could tell you, I make myself available to the residents to reach out to me. I would give you my phone number, my email. I would come sit on your porch, as I've done with Bill and his wife, so that we can have some type of understanding and agreement with what you guys expect from us. And we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that we can, make sure that your neighborhood is safe. And I'm just here to talk to so that we can have this understanding. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Hi. Yes, this is Sean Purcell, Contra Hocken resident, 2260 South Fifth. And in regards to the traffic dieting that I was just watching, I applaud everyone for trying to make the streets safer, completely agree. But at what cost if the traffic is backing up onto 76 because we're necking down? Doesn't make a lot of sense to put residents that are coming in from 76 at risk to help with crossings. Again, tough situation. I know everyone got real relaxed with COVID, you know, and there's not as many cars on the streets. I mean, one of our council members hit the nail on the head. You know, as a resident, before COVID hit, we're, you know, going out during the rush hour, coming in, especially going out in the mornings. Traffic's backed up past 7-Eleven and even much further back. Now, we're talking about potentially adding to that traffic with, you know, we have more apartments going in, more cars in the road, and now we're looking at necking down again. I think it's going to just cause more safety concerns than the existing situation that we're with. Something to think about.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, and council as a whole will take that into consideration. Thank you very much. And we have someone else for public comment?
Hello, this is Jim C. Parr again. I just had one quick thing to add, and I promise I'll make it brief. One of the incidents that we had last year with the Bears, one of our vehicles, which is parked on the street side, was struck by one of the parents that was escorting a Contra Hocken Golden Bear player, and they drove off. I talked to the borough about it. I talked to Mark, who initially pledged to try to help me. Came back later, commented that he was getting a name from somebody that knew who had hit me. He just later said that that person would not give him the name. So I'm sitting here with a $1,700 bill and a damaged car and really no trust. So, anyway, still very, very upset about that. I don't know if that's a question, but, and thank you. That's my final comment.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else with public comment? Okay, no one else with public comment, so I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
You, good night.